I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful peninsulas united by a bridge of steel where equal opportunity and justice for all is provided.
Hi. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Here. Okay, and now we need the approval of the agenda, but before we do that, we need to request a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a closed session after good of the order, to discuss a confidential read-written legal opinion with the city attorney and to discuss trial or settlement strategy in connection with certain pending litigation in the cases of Louis J. Richardson, Jr. versus the City of Cadillac, case number 14-25321-CZ, and then Clam Lake Township and Herring Township versus the State Boundary Commission, Terry D. LLC, and the City of Cadillac, case number 14-25391-AA. Would someone make that motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments, and we ask that you would keep your public comments to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, along with saying your name and your address, if you could please write it down, that's very helpful.
Hi, I'm Loretta DeJulian Snyder. I live at 1107 Sunset Lane in Cadillac, Michigan, on Lake Cadillac. We also have a second property on Lake Cadillac. We own the Marina Restaurant at 2404 Sunnyside Drive. Now, what I'm here to talk to you about is that on December the 22nd, I was approached with other people, where we have coffee in the morning, to say what we would like to see the city commission accomplish. And I said what I would like to see happen is for you people to help get a good level control, the legal level, for the lake, because we haven't had the legal level in a long, long time. Well, this must have upset somebody. The next day, on December the 23rd, on the 24th, I received a phone call from Mike Solomon. He wanted to tell me a few things that I don't know. First of all, the large homes on Lake Mitchell that have replaced all the small cottages have displaced the lake, so that's why we have this big body of water that he can't My husband, Jack, is a geologist who has worked in this area. He does not agree. He also said that in September, boats are still running on the lake. What does that have to do with us, with our homes on Lake Cadillac in September? Why doesn't he get the lake leveled down where it belongs? We, the home people and the property owners, are the ones who pay the taxes, not the people who own the boats. Then he tells me the lake at this time is over the legal limit. Now, isn't that wonderful? So that means we'll have more problems in the spring. My husband helped some of the other men who are in charge, and he has offered to help Mike Solomon, to control and how to ratchet up the dam so that nobody gets flooded out below, and so this goes on constantly. So Mike Solomon has caused a lot of damage to my home, and he's caused a lot of damage to other homes. And some of the city fathers came to my house, and they saw the water coming up from the floor in a room that was once so beautiful that we used often. Now, I think the last thing, you know, he's done a lot of other damage. The road around the walkway has all these big lumps that we never had before. The sidewalk is beginning to deteriorate. We don't need that in Cadillac. You see that all the way around the lake, all these bumps. We have to have better control. We've had roads go out, we've had culvers replaced. Do we need that every spring? I don't think so. I don't think the city or the county needs another lawsuit, but I think it's time that we do something about the lake, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, we will close public comment in this first session. Next on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda, and we have the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 15th in our packet to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we have a public hearing to consider the approval of a corrected application from Spencer Plastics, Inc. for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $567,426.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As was previously briefed at your last meeting, this is a corrected industrial facilities tax exemption request. City Council previously did approve this. The assessor's office caught an error in the application amount that I believe was over six figures. This corrected amount is before you this evening for consideration. The numbers with respect to retention of existing jobs of 23 have not changed, nor the creation of one job has not changed.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for the public portion of the public hearing. And seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2014-3085, or actually the as proposed, which would approve the request from Spencer Plastics for a $567,426 facilities tax exemption certificate as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. And this evening, we have some appointments and reappointments.
Yes, the first one is the council member appointments, both regular and alternate to the Board of Review. The Board of Review appointments from the council have a one-year term, and they expire on 1/7/15.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Stevens to the Board of Review with an alternate of Councilmember Malama.
I'll support that. Are you willing to keep doing that good job?
Sure, definitely, yeah.
I think you're, you do an excellent job in that role.
You were the alternate last.
And I'm not just buttering you up, you really do.
I appreciate it.
And we really appreciate you doing that.
It takes a lot of time, and I think other people should step up, too.
Are you volunteering?
No. But, you know, I would hate to pick and choose on what committee he sits on, because he does a wonderful job, and we have done that in the past, but that takes a lot of time, and I know he does an excellent job. He did an excellent job on the water and sewage, too. Excellent job.
Okay, so Councilmember Stevens, you were okay with that?
I am, yeah.
And Councilmember Malama, are you okay as the alternate?
I would help him out, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next appointment, it's being recommended that Thomas Olmsted be reappointed to a three-year term on the Maple Hill Cemetery Board, for the term to expire on January 17, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Tom Olmsted as presented to the cemetery board.
Support. And was he contacted and accepted? Good. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next, it's being recommended that Joseph Schickel be reappointed to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on January 9, 2018.
It's nine years, so he's given a lot of years to the city, which is a big thank you to him, and I'd like to make the motion that we reappoint Joseph Schickel for a three-year term at the Planning Commission, ending on January 9, 2018.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the introduction of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This first introduction is with respect to the request to adopt a resolution that'll introduce an ordinance amending our city zoning map. This is for a property located off of US 131 and M-55 that was recently annexed into the city. The purpose for tonight's action or consideration is to simply set a public hearing for February 2, 2015. Note, because it is with respect to land, we are skipping a meeting accordingly. Jury, would you want to introduce anything else at this time about the property?
The Planning Commission did hold a similar public hearing on this matter. In fact, you have a copy of the report in your packet. Essentially, what the ordinance requires is that the city apply a zoning classification to this property that most closely conforms to the way in which it was previously zoned while part of Clam Lake Township, and that classification happens to be the R1. That recommendation has been made unanimously by the Planning Commission, and that will be the subject of the public hearing that's coming up in February. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions. And we'll be making a full presentation at that time.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented, which would introduce the ordinance amending the city zoning map, the US 131-M-55 annexed property, and set the public hearing for February 2, 2015.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This next item, again, is to introduce a resolution that introduces an ordinance that'll amend our code regarding dangerous structures and to set a public hearing for January 20 of 2015. In short, our code enforcement officials have determined, in working with prosecutor's office, that our buildings code with respect to dangerous structures is somewhat out of date and does need to be updated. And the recommendation that's going to be prepared for you in a couple of weeks is going to be to implement changes that will mirror the state housing code with respect to enforcement provisions regarding dangerous structures. The recommendation, again, this evening, is simply to set the public hearing. A more thorough presentation will be provided at that hearing accordingly.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance number, I don't know where it is, to amend Article 16, no, Chapter 16. Where am I? I lost my place.
Article?
Article 4, Division 2 of the City Code of Ordinances regarding dangerous structures, set a public hearing for January 20, 2015.
Support. Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This next item, I'm very proud, again, to brief the council about. This is with respect to the MDOT work off of Seventh Street. This is a resolution that residents of the city council to adopt regarding a contract with MDOT for the resurfacing work off of Seventh Street from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue, and then the reconstruction work at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Eighth Street. This is a very interesting project, as mentioned earlier, or rather later, just this past year. The city was successful in getting an MDOT Transportation Enhancement Grant, Category A grant, through their Economic Development Division. The grant amount is $142,000, and the match amount has been contributed by our local manufacturers. The city is not being required to come up with any of the actual finances to meet that local match. Those dollars, again, are being privately contributed by several of the manufacturers that are going to benefit through this improvement project. Avon Protection, by the way, was the company that sort of led the fight in getting this through. And so, again, we're very proud to have this this evening. Call it general housekeeping, if you will, but what's required this evening is a motion to approve those documents.
I have a question if it's all right now.
Sure, go ahead.
Was this, this is specific to one of the projects? Is this the, with Avon? That this allows you to do it because of a project that they're doing?
Yes, Avon Protection received an incentive through the MEDC for bringing in a new line of work after they consolidated at another plant outside of the state of Michigan. When they did that, that made them then eligible to basically come to the city to have us work with them and with the state in trying to get an enhancement grant in place to help improve the roadways. It wasn't a guarantee. There were onsite surveying of the conditions of the roads that they first had to meet a certain substandard level to qualify, which they did, and that's where we're at today. So, yes, if it was not for them bringing new work up into the Cadillac operation, this would not be a project today.
Well, as I know, you know, Councilmember Spohman was on. We used to do quite a few of these type of things, and it's nice that Avon has really initiated this. You know, it may be something we put on our radar in the future when projects like this come along to get more active with them, because this is a great, and it helps the whole neighborhood out as well, so.
Well, it's excellent that Avon had the insight to take this further, rather than just take the initial grant, what that they knew to come back and ask the city to help with that. So, it's great. Okay, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding a contract with MDOT for resurfacing work along the Seventh Street from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue and reconstruction work at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Eighth Street, and altogether with necessary related work. Do we have support?
That's weird, that sounds funny. Okay.
Funny sounding resolution. Yeah, sorry.
Please just say you have support.
It covers the whole project.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This next item is with respect, again, to the Michigan Department of Transportation. This is the annual performance resolution that governmental agencies do enter into. This is a document that is required by MDOT as part of their annual permit application process. If we could think of Mitchell Street as really the primary...
Hanging the banners.
What's that?
Hanging the banners.
Hanging the banners, exactly, and the closure of state highways. And so, again, before you this evening, we have this updated resolution, and the request is to authorize the city clerk to submit it to MDOT as part of the annual permit process.
I move to adopt the performance resolution for governmental agencies as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. This last item under this section is the request to adopt a resolution approving the change of title from Director of Law Enforcement Services position to Chief of Police. In summary, on December 29, the Civil Service Commission met to discuss the Director of Law Enforcement Services position. As a part of that discussion, it was mentioned that the police department would like to see the Director of Law Enforcement position title amended to Chief of Police, which is a more traditional title. The commission concurred with the suggestion, as do I, and recommended via a motion its support in modifying the title to Chief of Police and recommending that change to the city council for consideration. The city council is being asked to approve this this evening, as the city council did create the position about a year ago.
I have some questions on that one. I'm personally hoping that in our closed session that I can ask the city attorney some questions. This has been going on for three or four years, the title change and the disposition and other positions, and some of it deals with personnel. And so, to really get a feel for getting into this issue, I need to have some clarification from our city attorney.
Okay.
In closed session.
Well, we, the city council's added closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion, so, you know, as to the timing of your discussion of this issue, I will say that as it relates to the change in name, it's not necessarily a legal issue, it's more of a policy issue. The name change does not affect the position, but city council created the position and has every right to change the title of that position.
And I understand that, but there were a lot more to this issue than just a name change, and we've spent a great deal of money in this endeavor, and I guess I would like to see how my dollars have been spent.
Okay, Marcus, I guess what we're being asked to do tonight is, outside of all those other things that Councilmember Malama is concerned with, we're merely being asked to take a vote to change the title per the recommendation of the Civil Service Board, correct?
That is correct.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Malama, those aren't questions that you feel comfortable asking in open session because they...
No, I do not.
...deal with...
I do not. It, we had discussions for the last three years in closed session on these issues and on this topic, so I do not feel comfortable in asking those questions now.
Because it deals with specific...
It deals with personnel, and it also deals with our legal cases that were pending or out there, and this all kind of wraps up together. And I know I may forget some things, but I do remember many of those discussions, and so I do not feel comfortable voting on this or...
Marcus, can I just seek some clarification? Can you explain, again, what we're being asked to do based on what the Civil Service Commission brought to you?
Yes, and perhaps for just some additional background information as well, about a year ago, the city council created this position of Director of Law Enforcement Services. Nothing in that position is, you know, the position, we're not asking to change the position. The position is static. What is being asked to be changed is the title. That's what is within the city council's purview this evening. The recommendation came forward through the Civil Service Commission to change the title. It really purely is a change in the semantics, it's a change of the name, it doesn't change the job. The job title itself was something, Chief of Police, that is more traditional than the department would prefer that the position is called, and while Director of Law Enforcement Services title was a position title that I had developed about a year ago, I am okay with the modification to the name change.
So whether we vote this evening to change it to Chief of Police or it stays Director of Law Enforcement, the Civil Service Commission is going to be able to move forward with their recommendation and testing and everything that I...
That is correct. The Civil Service Commission is able to fill the position accordingly, regardless of whether the city council chooses to modify the name of the position from Director of Law Enforcement Services to Chief of Police or to anything else.
I guess now that helps clarify, because I was, you know, the article in the paper came, we didn't get any communication on it, and that's talking about more, so this one is just a name change.
Yes.
Now, I remember a year ago, when we had this, I was, I know that the police at that time had mentioned they liked the Chief of Police. I thought that was fine, because that's what they recommended, and actually, I think you came to that meeting, and you were very, you were very persistent, it couldn't be. Now, I'm glad to see this changed, but I'm curious, what, why couldn't we have just done that a year ago? What was the reason we couldn't have done, and now we can? I don't understand the...
About a year ago, we created the position itself. It was a new position that... It was a new position that the city previously didn't have. The Director of Law Enforcement Services title, I thought, paid homage to the sort of past positions that we had of Director of Public Safety, albeit this was just simply for the police department. Additionally, I also thought that it created more or less a sense of position, whereas the police chief or the Director of Law Enforcement Services is still a department out of the city, not unlike any of the other department head positions as well. I still think that it's a, that it is a fine title to have. However, through, through the passage of time and through additional communication with the police department itself, they were really desiring to change it and to modify it to the Chief of Police title. And so, I'm, I am okay with that.
And then, we are, it sounds like in addition, that position is going to finally get filled.
That is correct. And that's what I reported last week.
Yes.
But, you know, and I wish we would have known, the confusion is that, we just said at the goal setting, what was one of the things I brought up at the goal setting, we need to fill this, and we, we kept telling, we can't, we can't, we can't. We've been getting told this. I wish five years ago...
It's been sitting with the Civil Service Board.
But now, they're, they're moving forward, so we need to be able to help them as, as they move towards that goal. We're not, we're not making that decision. We just need to make, we can have some input on what is called.
But I, up until this last week, I didn't realize, I wish we would have known five years ago, we were waiting for civil service. We haven't had this position filled. I know I'm not the only one up here thinking that was, if I would have known that it was up to the civil service, I would have been saying five years ago, let's have the civil service do it. I wish we would have known that. We've been told for five years, we've had this empty. Up until that notice, I didn't realize they had that authority. I don't know if any of us did.
Mike, could you talk to that, please?
Yeah, I don't think they have the authority. They have the authority to create the certified list from which you can fill the position. But they don't have the authority to obligate you, say, for instance, let's take an example where you don't have revenue to pay for that position. You can create a certified list for that and still elect not to fill it because of budgetary constraints.
I see.
But, just like with what they did with the firemen, they create that list.
Right.
Based on all of the laws and documents and, and...
Yeah.
Acts that they have to support.
I just wish we would have known, I mean, if they would have been allowed to act on this sooner, we had that Public Safety Committee for years, we spent money on a consultant, and we could have simply just had them do this, and we could have been proceeding fine.
Well, I don't... When did Matt Wolfisle retire? Wasn't that last year?
A year ago.
Okay, so it hasn't been five years. He was chief, right?
Well, no, he was filling in for...
He was acting.
But he was acting chief.
For four years.
And so, what this does, and then the Civil Service Commission has been in flux, to put it mildly. And so, I think this is the move forward.
Excuse me.
What's the difference between, thank you, Doug, what's the difference between the Director of Public Safety or Director of Law Enforcement and Chief of Police? Is it a different, is it a different job?
No.
Does it have different requirements?
The Civil Service Commission did modify some of the requirements, but it's the same position, the same position responsibilities.
Okay.
Do we know what modifications they were? Because I know this discussion has been going on at least four years, maybe five, as, as Councilman Stevens has pointed out. So, I know this discussion has been going on for a long period of time.
As a particular...
It goes all the way back to the millage, it goes back to the safety road patrol millage. There's a lot of history on this one. So, that's why I just, I have very unanswered questions.
We have the opportunity to assist in making happen what has needed to happen for a long time, and that's to put leadership back in place within the police department. And this is part of the first step of doing that. We need to quit looking back and start looking forward at what our staff needs.
Who sets that criteria? Does the Civil Service Commission set the criteria? Do we set the criteria?
With Marcus.
They did.
We don't.
They did.
Well, but part of the reason I'm bringing that, I would like to see them then address the lieutenant position and the captain.
I believe that they are doing that. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Right. And I know you're right about looking...
But that's not our role.
I know, but I know that you're, you're correct in looking backwards, but it's...
No, I'm looking forward.
I just, disturbing that, I wish if, if I would have known this five years ago, we could have been pushing that process.
Well, we have the opportunity to do that.
See, part of the millage question was that we were down to seventeen patrol officers or seventeen people in that department. We had up to twenty-five. And where the need was, was for patrol officers. Now, what we're talking about here is top level, people who do not do patrols, very different than the fire department, which the captain pulls a full shift. And the problem was, we don't have enough people, foot soldiers. And my business experience says that you build an organization from the bottom up, not from the top down. So, I have some real reservations on the direction we're going and what we had discussed four years ago with you, City Manager, and in those closed sessions concerning the millage, concerning the lawsuits, the whole deal.
Well, I tend to...
So, I have a real reservation of the direction we're going.
I tend to disagree that we have to have leadership in place.
Yeah.
And sometimes, at least in my world, you have, you have leaders, leadership, but it's acting and working leadership. And I believe that's what we have in the police department, and that's what we have to have in the police department.
It's called overhead.
So, does anyone have anything else? And if not, is someone comfortable making the motion to support the civil service request?
I won't forget this one.
Councilmember Stevens, do you have all your questions answered?
Yeah, and I, I'm not, like I said, it's not an issue of, it's almost just reemphasizing, we've needed to do this, and I wish we could have done it five years ago and, and have the path. It's, it's about time, we've had some leadership take place to at least get the motion going.
Yes.
But I, this is, I can see that Councilmember Malama's concerned that this hasn't been the way we've been told things were going to happen.
Are you comfortable moving forward now?
Yes.
I think this is indicative of the lack of stability in the Civil Service Commission in the past five years. And I think that perhaps this is the fruits of creating some stability there again.
I would agree with you, but I think it's a lack of, a lot of other things, and a lot of...
We have the opportunity to correct him. I didn't mean to interrupt, just sharing.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the change of title of Director of Law Enforcement Services position to Chief of Police, as per the request from the Civil Service Commission. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkus?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments again.
To close out my history on nineteen, on 2014, I had, I got some, I had some questions.
Harry, could you introduce yourself, please?
Pardon?
Could you introduce yourself for the people who don't know you?
The two or three.
Your name?
Pardon?
You need to give your name.
Your name, please.
Just state your name. Harry Yonkman Boone.
Didn't I say that?
No.
Oh, I thought I did. Harry Yonkman from Boone.
Thank you, Harry Yonkman from Boone.
I wrote it down, I guess, that must have, thought I said it. Well, anyhow, I had some questions on closed meetings, and, so anyhow, me and Mike shakes his head every time I ask him about going in. I went to the internet, and I asked for open meetings and closed sessions, and I got this website here, and Foster Swift. And, oh, boy, I'm, I'm home free now. But anyhow, and didn't talk, didn't talk about anything about closed session, they just talked about the eighteen-hour posting of the deal. And then, right on the bottom here on small letters, it says, "If you have any questions, feel free." But they didn't give me an eight-hundred answer, and I'm a little scared of that. But anyhow, the best lawyer in town, he's going to be a commissioner now, and he ain't going to work for free. So, I'm going to have to do some research. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to good of the order. And we will start with Councilmember Malama, please.
Avon, right up first. First of all, January thirteenth will be a Cadillac manufacturers' meeting, and MEDC will be up, and we'll be talking about their role with manufacturers and what they're available and can do. That will be at Avon Automotive, and I know many of my manufacturing friends have, haven't seen the agenda yet, because it was tough to put things together when people were off for two weeks. But that should be coming out tomorrow. But that will be January thirteenth at MEDC at Avon Automotive, and thank you, Lee Richards. The issues and discussion over coffee shall be January fourteenth, and a place hasn't been located yet that's still being worked on. And anyway, and once again, this is the third time, I do want to thank the staff for the decorations in the park. Had a lot of compliments on that. Looks good. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shippers?
I don't have much. Happy New Year to everybody, and I look forward to 2015, bringing lots of good things here at the city. We're going to be kicking off the youth council with a meeting, I believe, the third Wednesday this month, from four to five p.m. So, with the youth that we have in place, we're going to be getting that ball rolling, which I'm really excited about. That's a good way to start the year. Another good way to start the year is moving forward with all the things that we've been waiting to move forward with, so, thanks for that, for staff, and anybody else.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Complimenting the staff again on the streets, usually a storm like this is when we start getting calls, and the calls were positive about how well the streets were maintained after the storm. Last year, I think, at this point, it was like the eighteenth storm, but it's, compliments to the staff again for taking care of that, it's appreciated. And then, the only other thought is, I know that Mrs. Snyder's brought that issue up before to us as a council, and it would be nice, maybe somehow, to get some sort of communication to her from the city in terms of that issue. I know that she's addressed it before, and just to see if there's anything, if any, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but if we could get an answer for it and at least get back to her on it. And that's it.
I would lie with Marcus probably.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Spelman?
I'm on the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board, and I can tell you that there are a lot of different opinions about what the lake level should be. And it's really complicated, because Lake Mitchell and Lake Cadillac are connected. And so, you have the homeowners, the riparian owners on the west side of Lake Mitchell, and they complain all the time, all the time that the water level is too low. And then, the closer you move to the Clam River, where it dumps out and where the dam is, and then you have the concern that the water level is too high. And anyway, I, you know, maybe we could have the Drain Commissioner here sometime to address us and, and review, you know, what he does and how he sets that water level, but we get both of those complaints, and it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But I, the, the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board has a meeting next week on Monday, January twelfth, at ten o'clock. I understand that Randy Norman is retiring. Got a notice about his retirement. Coffee tomorrow morning, and, boy, he's going to be missed.
Yeah, I'll say.
Good for him, that's all I can say. We'll miss him a lot. The, the property on the corner of US 131 and M-55 is, I, I have this down to say something about it, because I feel compelled to say something about it, because we voted on it tonight in terms of rezoning it, but I know another recommendation eventually will come before us, and we'll have some difficult decisions to make. There are so many sides of this, and, and I guess I don't really want to get into them right now, but I do want to say that I hope that as the developers move forward with that project, that they include the residents in that area in those discussions. Because I, it's been a long time since I've seen a project like this that has caused so many ill feelings with the residents in that area, and concern that they don't have a voice. And that's a concern of mine, frankly. And, you know, it, that's all I'm going to say. I am looking forward to another goal-setting session, as I wasn't able to attend the last one, or I was late, I guess, getting to the last one. We've got so many exciting things coming up this year, that I hope that we just focus on all of the really cool things in town, like the Place Plans Project and the Rotary Pavilion renovation and the White Pine Trail, Trailhead. And I know Jerry's looking forward to retiring one of these days, but I really hope we can get these projects in place and completed or almost completed before he does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Well, Happy New Year to everybody, and I need to wear this hat, so you can see.
It's a lion.
It is a lion's hat, because about four years ago, I had a friendly wager with the friends down at Pizza Plus, that should the Lions ever beat the Bears in both the regular season games and make it into the playoffs, I would wear a hat, a lion's hat, as a part of a, as a part of the end of a council meeting. Likewise, should the Bears manage to do that, he would wear a Bears hat during the day. And so, as luck may have had it, this is the year, and they had a terrific year, and as I always say, if not the Bears, let those Lions, let those Lions take it.
There you go.
Unfortunately, that ended yesterday. But, living up to my end of the bargain and wearing, and wearing the hat for the...
But, living up to my end of the bargain and wearing, and wearing the hat for the remainder of the good of the order, just wanted to mention again, Happy New Year again to everybody. We, I think, have had a, some fortunate, good weather, it looks like winter, however, has now reared its head. There is a short public service announcement slideshow that's up on our website and on our Facebook site for everybody to view. We are hoping and really looking forward to people participating, as we're trying to get that word out and making our winter maintenance go as easy as possible. Also mentioned, mentioning to Randy, I know Randy's not here, but thirty-three years this month of public service to our city is really quite, quite a testament for anyone to, to be able to enjoy such a long career and loyalty to, to one institution, which is just terrific, so hats off to Randy, literally. So, thank you.
Okay, I don't really have a lot this evening, I guess that I would just like to say that I am as equally excited about moving forward into 2015, taking care of some things and moving us into the future, and, and tonight was, was an example of how we're going to do that, and so I, I am excited. It was good over the holidays to see our young people come home to visit with their families and see them out with their friends. It's always such a great thing to see, because they so enjoy coming back into the community. Again, I would say, if anyone is interested in volunteering, I would encourage you to give any one of us a call, and we can share with you the openings on some of our committees and boards that you could help us with, and we would have really appreciate the opportunity to get every single one of them filled up moving into this year of 2015. And with that, we then will need to have a motion to take us into closed session.
And Mayor and Council, if I may add into that motion, that we also invite Jerry Adams, our Community Development Director, to participate in the last listed item, which is the Clam Lake Township and Hearing Charter Township v. the City Boundary, the City, excuse me, v. the State Boundary Commission, Terry D. LLC, and the City of Cadillac, case number fourteen dash two-five-three-nine-one-A-A.
I make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss confidential written legal opinion with the city attorney to discuss trial or settlement strategy in connection with certain pending litigation in the case of Louis J. Richardson Jr. v. City of Cadillac, case number fourteen-two-five-three-two-one-C-Z, and Clam Lake Township and Hearing Charter Township v. the City, excuse me, the State Boundary Commission, Terry D. LLC, and the City of Cadillac, case number fourteen-two-five-three-nine-one-A-A, and invite Jerry Adams, the Community Development Director, to join us for that last topic. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Back into session?
We'll make a motion to return to open session.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting for this evening. Thank you.